Good afternoon and welcome to the April 13, 2023 full Planning Commission meeting. Sorry for the technological issues, anyone who might be joining us. Start with a land acknowledgement. On behalf of the Seattle Planning Commission, we'd like to acknowledge that the city of Seattle is on stolen coast salish land, specifically the ancestral land of the Duwamish, Duquamish, and Muckleshoot tribes. We strive to remedy this injustice through our beliefs and actions in helping to steward our land and communities in Seattle. We are, of course, a public entity and our meetings are open to the public. But note that the Planning Commission does not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage people and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. This meeting is a hybrid meeting, for good or ill, where some individuals are participating remotely while others are participating in person in the boards and commission room at Seattle City Hall. We have a tradition of citing our color brave space norms at the beginning of our meetings. I'd like to ask commissioners to review them and ask if anyone would like to read one for us. You want to run and read it, or should I pick someone?
I'll read, I'll read one, David.
Thanks, Rick.
Put relationships first. Build community and racialized trust and care.
Thanks very much. Today, we have three agenda items. We have a briefing from the Office of Planning and Community Development on the Plan, Community Planning Work Plan. We have action on the commission's final draft recommendations related to the Industrial and Maritime Strategy Comprehensive Plan Amendments, which will soon be considered by City Council. And finally, we have a briefing on the mayor's proposed housing level. First up, though, we need to approve our minutes from the previous meeting of March 23rd. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes?
I'm moved.
Kayla moves. There are second?
Matt seconds.
Thanks, Matt. All in favor of adopting the minutes, approving the minutes from previous meetings, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Meetings are, the minutes are approved. Let's see. In terms of upcoming commission meetings, the next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is on Thursday, April 20th, 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. This will be an online meeting using the MS Teams platform. Our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, 27th, 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. This meeting will be held both in person and via MS Teams, as we're doing today. As noted before, this is a hybrid meeting. So both in person and on via Teams. I'm going to review the format immediately. This is you. If you want to go.
Yours does not identify.
Oh, there's a little teen little John over here. Okay, teeny John, go. Hopefully Vanessa, but Vanessa's not here, so that threw me. So, okay, so my name is John Hoy. I'm staff to the Seattle Planning Commission. Our executive director, Vanessa Murdock, is on vacation this week, and so I'm filling in. Okay, so as co-chair Goldberg noted before, this is a hybrid meeting being held both in person in the boards and commissions room of Seattle City Hall and online via the MS Teams platform. Sorry to anyone for technical difficulties. We've been working with MS Teams for two and a half years and we still have recurring issues sometimes. So I will, but I will review the format of this meeting. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for questions and comments from commissioners. We will be used, we will still be using the chat function even for those who are in the room. Using the chat function of MS Teams for all commissioners to join the discussion queue. I'd like to remind commissioners that chat function is not for substantive discussion, but rather to be recognized to speak only. Please enter your name in the chat to add yourself to the queue. This will help the co-chair and staff facilitate the discussions so we can have more fluid discussion. And ensure all commissioners have the opportunity to participate. As for public comment, we have two opportunities for public comment during this meeting. One, in advance of the commission's action on the final draft Industrial and Maritime Strategy Comprehensive Plan Amendments letter, and again, at the end of the meeting for a general public comment, the, our agenda notes that all public comment must be submitted in writing eight hours in advance of the meeting, or presented here in person in Seattle City Hall. I have not received any public comment via email. And at this point, we don't have anyone in person, but if anyone does come in person, we will have public comment. Just another reminder that we are now recording our full commission meetings and posting them via YouTube to our website. Please note that these meetings are not in lieu of our minutes, which are approved at the next full commission meeting. I'll turn it back to our co-chair. Great, thanks, John. We're joined this afternoon by Amy Nguyen from the Office of Planning and Community Development. Amy will provide an overview of OPCD's Community and Planning Work Plan. We have 60 minutes for this briefing. Amy, if you wouldn't mind leaving a little time for us to ask questions and make comments, that would be great. We'll start off with some commissioner introductions. I'll start and then let John help me popcorn around to the rest of everyone. I'm David Goldberg, he/him pronouns, and the co-chair of the commission, along with Michaela. And I live in the Wallingford Urban Village, work with State Department of Transportation. Kayla, why don't you go?
Okay, greetings, Michaela Dapper, and she/her pronouns. I live in the Capitol Hill neighborhood and I work in affordable housing policy and planning.
How about, let's go online to Kayla?
Hi, my name's Caleb Toolday, he/him pronouns, live in Columbia City and work as an educator at Rainier Stollers.
How about Lauren?
Amy, it's you being here. I'm Lauren, I'm she/her. I work at Nelson Neiers as a transportation planner and I live in Baker.
Do I see that Gianna is on the call? She says that she can't be a presenter, so she, okay, probably trust you, but she gave her. Okay, let's go with Rose.
Hello, this is, I'm Rose Luchaila Whitson. My pronouns recently changed to be person first. I'm now they/them. I live up north in Lipton Springs and I work as a wetland biologist and consulting permitting specialist for Jacobs Engineering.
I'm Matt Hutchins. I use he/him pronouns. I am an architect. I live in West Seattle.
Rick?
Greetings all. I'm Rick Muller. I use he/him pronouns. I live between Wallingford and Green Lake, and I am an architect and teach at the UW.
Rocky?
Good afternoon, Rocky DeRar, he/him pronouns. I live in Finney Ridge, near the Red Mill Burger, which is dangerous. And I work in for-profit housing developments based in W., work in Seattle.
Jamie?
Hello, everyone. I'm Jamie Strobel. I use she/her pronouns and I live in the future 130th Station area and work in climate change and environmental justice.
And I will introduce Gianna Kaitinar, who can't join us as presenter. She uses she/her pronouns. She lives in the Capitol Hill neighborhood, and she is a multimodal transportation planner. I think that's everyone.
Yeah, buddy.
Hey.
Actually, John, Matt Hutchins is here. He came in as his live event presenter number two, so he cannot be made a presenter now. If you come in as your live event presenter numbers, you cannot be then changed into a presenter once the meeting has started. So Matt Hutchins is also here.
He's here in the room and he has.
He's on my, on my, was a number too, so.
Let's introduce staff.
Then, we're gonna get there.
Robin, would you introduce yourself?
Yeah, Robin McGonigal. She/her, they/them pronouns. I live on Bashron. I'm staff to the commission and I'm working behind the scenes to try to get everybody in.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Olivia?
Hi, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns and I'm also staff to the commission.
And I'm John Hoy, staff to the Planning Commission. I use he/him pronouns and we are here. We're all, we're all here.
We're all here, yeah.
Take it away.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having me today. I'm gonna do my best not to start the computer because we have this unique opportunity to be in person, and I can tell that you all are a very fun group. So let's have some fun. I want you to suspend a little bit of what you traditionally receive in briefing. I feel like I got a difficult prompt, one that came where Vanessa was telling me how hard you all have been working on comprehensive plan and Seattle transportation plan. And so today, I'm going to try my best to bring the fun and creative to you all and show with you the work of the Community Planning Division, which is one of four divisions within the Office of Planning and Community Development, in addition to our commissions, obviously. I just, as a kind of interest slide, I previously, before coming to OPCD, was Public Art Director with the Office of Arts Culture. And a resource that I love to tell the public about, and because this is your taxpayer money as well, is the 1% for art, which includes our civic collection. So I pulled a couple of pieces of artwork that I thought was a good kind of grounding place as we're going to kind of go together into what community planning is and most, hopefully, what it could be in the future with your expertise and insight as well. What you'll notice at the far right is one of my favorite pieces in Aurora. So if you know the IHOP when you're going over, this is an artist, Vicki, that did, it's, it catches the light very beautifully. I'm spacing on the name and forgive me for the titles of not being there. The image to the left of the Aurora artwork, I think I love this one because it has some garish name like the pasticizing growth, which I think is just like a fun representation of it. The next piece is a new artwork that was actually installed in the Central District or in Spruce Street Community Park, and it was a very cool model that the public program is really moving into, really bringing artists on board early to do community engagement. And the last is one of my favorite prints from the civic collection was actually acquired when young people were brought on board to actually do the acquisition a couple of years back called Fresh Perspectives. All right, next slide please. All right, what we're going to be doing together, I'm going to make you adults have an interactive activity because I don't want to talk at you during this time. So I'm preparing for you that you're going to be engaged. I had a lot of fun. I was like, I'm gonna print this stuff out. We're gonna do it. But I'm gonna get a little bit uncomfortable and a little bit of weird. So I want you to unlock the inner poet and writer in you and remind yourself why planning? I think that is the, why did you dedicate your life to planning and your free time to this? And then let's share that together. Next, I'm gonna walk you through the community planning portfolio. I didn't prepare this presentation as much as our work program, as much as a sense of what we have been working on in the last quarter and what you can anticipate in the quarter to come. But as you'll see, in what is encompassing of the portfolio is many years in the pipeline. So it is, I tried to keep it relevant and exciting, and I also want to name that there are many people in this room and on this call that know a lot about this work, Lauren. So all that aside is, I'll be walking you through our sub-area plans, our work on the West Seattle Valley, White Rock Extension and Station Area Planning, Apple Transit Oriented Development, Duwamish Valley Program, Reconnect South Park, our South Delray's Community Planning effort, and our Aurora Lipton Springs Community Planning effort. And lastly, I don't want to talk at you for very long, so I wanted to reserve a good amount of my time for us to have a discussion and conversation. And I was advised from other OPCD staff that planning commissioners like to know what questions they're gonna get in advance. So what you can anticipate and what I hope that when you listen to my overview is I would like to know what you believe the future of community planning looks like. And taking that a step further, as you ground your own vision of what the future of community planning is, what are the gaps in the existing portfolio that I presented? And more than gaps, what is it that we can, I mean, I love compliments, but you know, what we can do better on, but also, you know, what we can magnify and amplify in our work? All right, now, for people not in the room, I'm gonna get up and hand out, okay, anybody brought pens? Okay, excellent. We are gonna be doing a committee together where we're gonna actually write a poem. Now, I want you all, so people online, you know, you can just fill it in as you, but let's first take a moment and imagine a space that you have felt inspired by or felt a sense of belonging. And if you need another way to think about it, what we want to get ourselves into this idea is of what is community for you? And then, we're gonna do this Madlith-esque poem prompt, maybe you a couple of minutes, but just to give you a sense of how I approached this, I gave myself a couple of minutes to do as well. If you go to the next slide, I'll read you my sample. And I want you to get a little bit weird. So, I'm from unlocked doors always open, from sriracha and fish sauce. I'm from White Center in the 90s, a rich immigrant enclave full of fruit stands, dollar stores, aunties and uncles, aromatic stockpots filled to the brim. I'm from Vietnamese karaoke love songs, the blooming cherry blossoms who long-gone limbs I remember as if they were my own. And when you go down to the slide, so people can stare at my response, which is quite vulnerable, we will stop this slide for a moment, and I just want everybody to take, let's go with five, four minutes? Five, four? Great.
I don't know, we think it.
John, you're doing it too, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Give it one more minute. I heard some pens drop, but I'm staring at this number here. I was gonna give you till 3:42, but I want to keep us moving along, and I think you all know where I'm gonna go next. Can I have a couple of volunteers to share theirs? Yeah, I'll share mine. Is that okay that the hockey puck's over there? Like, can everyone online hear Amy? Okay? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sweet. I'm from bright colored Tupperware, from logging roads and Catholic school uniforms, from laughter romping through the trees, crock pot meals and smoke breaks. I'm from the Drizzling Rain and the Douglas Spurs whose long-gone limbs remember, I remember as if they were my own. Yeah.
All right, I'll go. I am from exercise ball, from sharp knives and cast iron. I'm from a village on a hill. Red Mill smells amazing. I am from the neighbor kids playing, the tree trees whose long limbs I remember as if they were my own.
Thank you. And I think we have one more from the chat that's going to be here.
Kayla?
I can share, yeah. I'm from green coffee beans roasting over a fire, from Angera and piles of books. I'm from the, from the North End and Othello, Holly Park to the U District. I'm from the swoosh of a bus passing by, the maple tree guarding my inner child whose long-gone limbs I remember as if they were my own.
Thank you so much, Michaela. And also, we have a great one in the chat as well. Before I jump into my PowerPoint slides, I think something that we forget too often is we jump into the technical and we jump very much quickly into how do we solve. And I don't think there'll ever be anybody that will say community engagement doesn't matter, but we actually don't talk enough about how community engagement is so deeply personal and it so much guides how we approach and define our work. So a project is not just a project, right? It is, it comes down to how we are sculpting, how we're defining, and how we're holding ourselves accountable in this work. And I'm looking forward to walking through you all, what we do in our community planning division, but ultimately, you are the people, the community itself that also shapes and informs this project work. So next slide, two slides, actually. We don't need to look at my example. Go ahead, jump into the work. Okay, so the first item that I'm going to be talking about today is our sub-area plans. We will be producing sub-area plans for the six regional growth centers for the city of Seattle. We are separate from the comprehensive plan, but we are set for certification and adoption on the same timeframe as the comprehensive plan. As you can see here, what I wanted to demonstrate to you is in how we're approaching our sub-area plans, is we're currently in downtown and will be released, will be starting Northgate shortly, moving into first to Capitol Hill, and then in 2024, we'll be starting on Southlake Union and Uptown, ending with U District. The graphics that I provided here below is some of the work that we did in 2021. A part of our efforts in approaching sub-area plans was also wanting to start from a place of calling our previous plans. Because our sub-area plans will be certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council, we, well, we took in a value to standpoint for each of our regional growth centers across the PSRC checklist to identify what has been done and where the gaps are. So that's a part of the foundational work that we did in 2021. Next slide. Trying to remember what I put on each slide. Yes, next slide. I wanted to highlight where we are in the process of where, what we've done since the start of the year and what we'll be looking at in Q2. In end of last year, we released our first R and P for the downtown sub-area plan. In that process, we really wanted to lead with policy development, vision, racial equity and community engagement, and then sequence the technical analysis to follow, but we wanted to kind of get that as a base point. I think what's really exciting to see is that, and I know with PSRC, was really spelling out this desire for municipalities to engage innovation. So we're really running with that. Apart from how we're approaching this foundational work, even before jumping into sculpting, is we actually contracted with To Home a Peak Solutions, a really fantastic indigenous women-owned firm that is doing a tribal land assessment that's going to be producing an indigenous inclusivity guide to really be the accountability behind our sub-area plans. And really, we are all really excited about this because I think too often we start at equity and idea of where we are in the present, but I think it's an entirely different way to think around what are the future of our regional growth centers in 20 years that starts with tribal land assessment. So that's just one of the kind of ways that we are thinking about this work and again, how we hold ourselves accountable. We also spent the last several months meeting with, with key departments, everyone from SDBI, ASTO, OED, OSF. In a sense, what, what we really want to make sure that we're doing is we're not reinventing the wheel. How do our sub-area plans capture the innovation that's happening across our departments and will find it? We get asked a lot, what are the differences between sub-area plans and comprehensive plans? Our end product, we want real implementation. We want to take this window of time where, after we follow through this process, the community can see capital investments. They can see from a block to block how we are understanding climate change adaptation, how we're understanding economy. And so that's a part of what's guiding us. As we move into, as we are in Q2, we are working on getting Northgate going, as we've kind of started with downtown, and moving some of our technical analysis pieces as well. And we're going to be finalizing our draft racial equity toolkit outcomes with the downtown sub-area plan, which we have started. And we'll start getting out to the public some materials. We really, we had a fantastic intern that really walked us, did this great work around what does it look like for us to be accountable to the public and really demonstrating our work. So that's why we're prioritizing getting that website up so that people can stay engaged as we move down the line. I should have said this, I'm gonna go really high-low because there's a lot in the portfolio, but at any point in time, if you would like to talk with myself or my staff on any of this work, we're always, we always love meeting us right now. For the sub-area plans, the team is myself and Magna Hognis, who's our urban designer. And we also, in the last budget cycle, have, will be bringing on board a sub-area planner in addition to that. Next slide.
We also interject that if people have, want to put themselves in a queue as we go along for a clarifying question or a subsequent comment, go ahead and do that.
Great, thank you. I kept this pretty high level to what my team is particularly working on because I know that you all are also been engaged on the West Seattle Valley White Rock Extension. So I'm not gonna spend too long. Within the portfolio, we have a couple of dedicated staff leading the planning work group, a part of the larger kind of Wisley City program. And we are also tasked with station area planning. We're anticipated to begin our station area planning pretty shortly here, and what you can anticipate is our timeline has been in year as stations come on board as well. In other slides, I'll let you know on how we're thinking around our station area planning priorities alongside several of our other kind of transportation planning related projects. But I just wanted to highlight here some of the pieces. Our staff have been really busy in supporting the sub-transit board decision a couple of weeks ago and providing guidance for the preferred alignment. We've also been doing a fair amount of advocacy around ADA access, supporting developing conceptual plans for Wisley stations, and working through, it feels like it never stops, the same policy discussions around bus layover, passenger loading zone, retail restaurants, why can't we have nice things conversations? As we move into the, as the year goes on, I think what we are very cognizant of where is how are we ensuring that our work is aligning with the Seattle Transportation Plan and the Transportation Levy? So a lot of our staff time is working in coordination with Estor. I think what we're most excited about is we currently are hiring for a transit oriented development strategist, which will be on my team. It's our first time that we'll have a dedicated TOD position. So anybody, if you know any that would be excited to work with me and our team, we're looking for great talent and we have a lot of ambition. One thing that I'll say around how we've conceived of the transit oriented development strategist is really recognizing that this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. And there is so much community energy as echoed within our own division, equitable development initiative divisions. We really want to be on board and ready to align. And that's what we're looking for. We're also working very closely in coordination with South Transit and Estor to make sure we can maximize our summer community engagement for Wisley, which all agencies are gonna be pounding everybody. Next slide. We received a grant from the Federal Transit Administration. It was actually, we were awarded in 2019, but just due to bureaucracy and the difficulty to move that money, we started in the work within what I'd say the last year and a half. Our FTA funding is specifically to do equitable transit oriented development. There's really, for the grant, we really conceived it as a tri-fold. One that is really rooted in what does it look like to fund communities to envision ETOD, develop that framework, not one that is traditionally historically been done, which is reactionary. Unfortunately, we are in a very reactionary environment, so it's better said in theory than what's actually in practice. That said, a large sum of our FTA funding is going to be going directly to fund place based work groups in the Chinatown International District and in South Delray, in the Delray Corridor. And those place based groups are gonna fund up into a community steering committee that will effectively inform our values and policies for what ETOD is and can be. The other component of our FTA funding is going to go to, in partnership with Estor, we are sharing this FTA funding for station access, street concept design and community engagement. And then as we move down the line, we also conceived this grant to help fund remnant parcels, acquisition and planning work. So we're very excited about that. We're, we've hit, it's been a lot of learning lessons as OPCD is not traditionally a holder of federal funds, but all that is to be said, we're very excited about this work and ETOD being a big driver of our approach to station area planning in addition to our Wisley work. Next slide. The Delray Valley Program also sits within the community planning division. The Delray Valley Program, I don't even know where to start with this. The team produced a fantastic annual update. I've read it, a hyperlink there, but it's also on our website. I really believe that the Delray Valley Program is a model for how we can do our planning better, which is, it really started years ago with Delray Valley Action Plan. In this program, that is a representation of OPCD staff, Office of Sustainability Environment and many others have been working tirelessly for years to deliver on that action plan. And what we will be able to read in this last annual update is where we are in those commitments. And there's a lot of very exciting work happening right now because there's funding coming in from FEMA. I think the King Tides of the last ones really showed us a sense of urgency in this work. There's also the team secured private funding from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation to really expand their knowledge in community. And as a team, there's so much energy happening around resilience districts and resilience work. So just wanted to name that. There's quite a bit of, there's an advisory group that's informing that resilience planning work that's happening in real time right now. Next slide. Another one of our projects in the Delray Valley is Reconnect South Park. I think the big exciting win is that we, we had applied, we applied for the Reconnecting Communities Grant and we received it. Woo, great, money. So I think the, kind of just what I was gonna tell is, we're very excited about this project for many reasons, which is, I think in part four of it, we spend so much of our time thinking about how freeways destroyed by BIPOC communities, but what does it look like for us to imagine communities without freeways dissecting it? And this is a really community led process. We received money from the state in the last legislative cycle, $600,000 to begin this work that has led to a community team that is really leading on that visioning and community engagement, and then a technical consultant that is supporting that work. But this is a, this is a multi-year, this is gonna be a decades long process. And I think, again, kind of, why I wanted to even start with the prompting of why you as individuals do this planning work, I think what we're trying to do with Reconnect South Park is have a real pedagogical, logical shift on the possibilities of who's at the driver's seat of imagining your own community and what does it look like for us to commit to that time and resourcing to make it happen? Next slide. And then our portfolio also includes more area planning, specific community planning efforts. So we're doing community planning in South Delray that will result into a similar kind of action plan. This is, we started this last year, working with three prominent BIPOC led organizations in the area. We recently closed a survey where we had 300 people respond. And we're building coordination with Seattle Public Utilities and Department Neighborhoods and South Transit, Estor. And really, the kind of goal in this is recognizing how much change is happening on the Delray Corridor and putting our time into investing in community capacity to create an action plan. Next slide. We are also doing planning in Aurora Lipton Springs. This is arguably very long overdue, but a big part of the opportunity that we're trying to leverage is in the last year's skate ledge, 50 million was directed to watch that to do spot improvements, particularly on the Aurora Corridor between 90th and 105th. Their focus is very specific into that area. We're really interested in pushing the conversation from the boundaries and to provide that community planning blocks away from just the Aurora Corridor, but we're working very closely with Estor as they're moving on a very quick timeline for engagement this spring into summer. But I, we're, we're very excited about this work as there's lots of synergies with our Northgate sub area planning that we're doing as well. And I promised my time, so I'm gonna, I think I have one more slide to turn over to the discussion questions. Next slide, please. Okay, great. But before I ask you all questions, do you have any questions for me on what you heard? Great, really good. We're off to a big super discussion. Fantastic. Okay, so I thought that we could talk a bit around what the future of community planning is.
Is that a question?
Yes. I mean, I did think about adding, what does the future of community planning look like for you, but it felt a little bit too descriptive, so I wanted to keep it a bit more open ended.
Well, there's, there's not a queue in the chat. Rose just popped up though, so Rose?
Yeah, I mean, I think as you've been talking, I've been really resonating with what you've been saying. So I guess what I would add is on top of keeping equity first and doing meaningful travel engagement, also really assessing the times when we need to speed up planning or slow it down because there are some times where we cannot wait. I feel that with like climate urgency or looking at our houseless neighbors and being like, what can we do for them immediately as well as carry out community planning in the long term? Or rather, what can we do with them? Because it's not for them, it's both, anyway.
Thank you so much, and I completely agree. I think what we are thinking quite a bit around with leveraging the opportunity of sub area plans with the PSRC checklist spelling out climate change and climate adaptation as a key part for municipalities to engage in, we really want to use these sub area plans to draw out a space to ask the questions like, what does it look like for Seattle to be not only ready, but welcoming and open to climate refugees? Right? How are we, we haven't planned for the growth that we have now, but we know this inevitability. What does it look like to center within our regional growth centers, this idea that that we are, we're not only welcoming, we're setting up an opportunity for climate refugees to thrive and how that even underscores our policies and our investments?
Rocky has some thoughts and then Laura.
Yeah, I am continually curious about technology and respect to COVID. I mean, we're in a room here, this is the most people we've had. I've been involved in a planning commission meeting, but seeing some of the comp planings that happened where you had in person and a lot of like survey and participate by Zoom and these things. And so I don't know what the right balance is between in-person discourse and electronic, but it seems like there are some real opportunities to get more people engaged, which has been, I think, the struggle for public policymakers forever, right? Is it 50 people that are driving policy or can we actually hear from our residents? So I'm just curious how much of that, if there's a balance or something you've found that works? And I get that's a little bit of a technical question about community planning, but I'm curious.
Do I respond?
Go for it.
I don't know the point of that.
Do whatever you want.
I'll send the camera to do whatever you want. Conversation, but it has to be an iambic pentameter.
No, it's an excellent question. And I'm really excited around the possibilities of new technology, but I also, I, you can't lose the value of what face to face interaction is. And I think from a like city bureaucrat standpoint, I think we need to always do better and do more, offer more, right? It's funny, I work with BIPOC high school students on the weekends and they always have headphones in all the time. It's like, they just live with headphones in. And I'm like, hey Xavier, he actually is listening to me, he just won't take his headphones out. And I think that there is a, sorry, I just wanted to say that there's these assumptions that we need to question around how people are engaging because I'm working with these young people that are staring at their phones all Saturday and then I'll ask a question around like the future of economic justice and then they'll just look up and blow me away and then look back down on Chinatown. And I'm like, oh, this is, yeah, okay, I got it, I understand. But I think the other piece too is, when I think about technologies, I don't think purely just around IT, I think here around the different mediums in which we can communicate with people. So, you know, I shared, buddy, in my previous capacity, I was the public health director. And right during COVID, we got American Rescue money to do activations in public spaces. And a big part of that was about civic recovery and it was some of the best engagement I've ever seen. I got to, we brought Digwell Planets to Westlake. And if you ever wonder why there's no diversity in Seattle, book Digwell Planets and offer a free concert in Westlake Park and it's, that's how you get communities of color to turn out, not just to everybody, all ages. That's how we can, as a city, do better in our engagement. And I also think that the way that we talk about planning is just boring and doesn't have to be. Something that I talk about a lot is with COVID, the Linkwood Museum did a fantastic project, this was in the midst of lockdowns around love letters to the ID and what was produced from it, like just makes your heart wrench, but we could very easily call all of those submissions and have one of the most comprehensive qualitative ways of understanding a neighborhood, a very complex neighborhood through memory, through place, through what amenities people remember, what they want. That's a different way of collecting feedback than Survey Monkey. We don't do enough of projects like that. That happened online.
Your question is, what does the future of community planning look like? And to me, it's like everything that you're presenting. Really value the just artful way that you, even just what you said about the idea of like, communities are gathering, communities are pulling together to get through a pandemic and supporting each other and how can we see that as voice and response? And so I'm just like blown away by the perspective that the OPCD team is taking to community planning and knowing that you're having to check, you know, these PSRC checklists and like, we're doing this work in a way that I've never seen the city do before. So I'm just really loving this presentation. My question for you or like what I kind of want to ask the commissioners is like, how we can support this work through the comp plan update? Because that's what we're elbows deep in. And particularly that came through the Aurora Lipton Springs work is kind of what made me think of that question because I think as a commission, we're interested in, you know, all of these objectives of climate action and resilience and racial equity, safety, equitable development, affordable housing. And we, our role as the planning commission is really advocating for a lot of this leading edge work that I know you and your team are leading. And so I was thinking about all the other Green Springs, if I'm not mistaken, the boundaries of that urban village are still in the shape of a cross, they're not in the shape of a walk shed or in the shape of, you know, a place that actually just presents like a 10 minute walk to transit. And I totally have the transportation planner hat on there, but you know, what are the ways that we can partner with you and amplify this, this good work that your team is doing to like, just co amplify that through the comp plan process? If there's any ideas, we're just all open to that and open to discussion from anyone about that too.
I want to answer that question. Not on record. Yeah. I want to give you a very step by step answer for that because I, but no, that's, that's a joke, but it's not a joke. I think there's so much and I really appreciate, thank you so much for just, I can't understand how hardworking the community planning team is, the staff that are doing this work is, I can say all of their names and they, they were so tireless, they're the engine behind all of this. And there is so much that we, you all as commissioners, I think we, I think it's on me and I'm sad, this is my first time getting to meet many of you and addressing you all because I think through being able to provide more information that you would be able to kind of see and hear our asks, I think sometimes we, we get a bit sidelined from the bigger, more high profile pieces, but I think it's a part of how we filter out that message and also providing all of that. Aurora Lipton Springs is such a fascinating area. And so Katie came up in our office, is living at work and she's been going on walking tours. And there's that, there's, there's, there's so much happening there that we, we, and the we is the city, we, I think, have to challenge the idea of who the community is in there in that area because there is actually community. It's just not in the same formalized, you know, modes that we see in other areas. And I think that the corridor has also not been prompted in a way, that's why we are doing a bit of planning there, to be able to ask, what does this look like in 20 years? And that's what we're really excited about.
Matt?
Yeah, thanks for coming today. My question is, I feel like the impulse around community outreach has gotten so much more sophisticated and the information that gathering is so much, you know, so more broad and insightful and meaningful, but I'm also sensing kind of maybe a disconnect. But I'm also sensing kind of maybe a disconnect for how it turns into action. I don't know, I mean, I think it's a common complaint that, you know, for all the Seattle process, that then what happens doesn't necessarily match up with, with what the community might have asked for. And I know that that translation is quite difficult. I'm wondering, how do you see some of these? How do you see, you know, when you're talking about leveraging the, I've been talking about leveraging those community, the community outreach into real, like, you know, direct response in the community plan?
Yeah, I think that a lot of where we fall short is when we say community engagement without actually naming what communities we've been talking to or who we're talking to. We use it as this metaphor. And I think that lack of transparency is what gets us in trouble. And when we're able to present back to the public exactly who has informed our idea of community engagement, that's why we need to put values first and foremost. I think that's like, when I think about accountability and transparency, that's the approach that we want to take with our sub-area plans and why we're leading with the Injustice Inclusivity Guide is, once we're able to put out the fact that these are the racial equity outcomes, this is what is underpinning and driving our work, we set ourselves up better to push against what challenges us, because we have already been really clear that community is not monolithic. And regardless of, even that comment, community is not monolithic, certain communities historically have had more access to policymakers. So if we're able to say at the forefront that when we're doing community engagement, we actually don't mean everybody, we mean the people who haven't been centered in this process, get the first swing at it. Yeah, there's going to be people who are angry, but we'd be ready for that, because that's a part of, yeah, that's what I would kind of say on the community. And that sets up its own accountability feed, feedback loop, right? Which is like, you know, if we're saying for years, you know, the traditional single white homeowner has been the pipeline into our neighborhood plans, and we're articulating that in 2020 to 2050, what we're interested in is a different composition of lived experience. And that's why we're not listening to this. That changes the discourse and dialogue. But when we say we're doing community engagement with everybody, then it's, you know.
Yeah.
So we don't have, we don't have public comment on the letter, which we had saved some time for. So we can go a little bit longer with this conversation, if people are interested in that.
And if Amy has time.
And if Amy has a few more minutes. So about 14:00.
I have a job.
This is your.
Most important thing to do.
I even shouted for you guys. You know, I think I would love to continue talking with you all offline, I underscored enough, not offline, I can be in public too. That sounds weird. Sorry, now I'm getting awkward. If you at any point at all want to talk with me or anyone on my team, or any of the projects that we discussed today are of interest to you, please don't hesitate to reach out. John can give you my contact information. But I just want to underscore my thanks to all of you for putting in this time. I know being commissioner is not glamorous. Yeah, you guys put in a lot of time. And I, I thank you for, for sharing a little bit of silly activity on writing a poem. And I just, I'm a bit of a a romantic, and I wanted to leave today with you all with a sense around what I think we don't talk enough about in planning, which is love, right? We should love our city, we should want to live, not a city for us, but futures to come. And that's what I want to leave on. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. How many people work in your division? It seems like that was an astonishing amount of stuff.
Yeah. I have Siya, Lucy, and David, Katie, Vera, Casey, hiring two in the city, yeah.
David Goldberg.
David Goldberg, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the unreal David. So I'll just say from a work plan perspective, Amy, I was gonna say, I and Vanessa have talked with Amy about her work, and so glad she could come today, finally. And we have, we've heard from some of these projects in the past, but there are others that we, that are just starting. And I'm guessing that you all will be interested in following those projects, so.
I think it's very exciting, and there's a lot of it in the road, and so you're.
And it's very real.
And it's very real, and there's real money on the table.
So.
Yeah, real states.
Hope you can join us again.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
So I can, I can say something about the next.
Do it.
Okay. I'm really glad that Amy could join us, and she asked me for permission to be weird, and I said yes. So thank you, thank you for letting that.
Thanks for giving your permission to be weird.
I mean, just a little bit different, which is, which is good. So I just want to say, because we did save time for public comment on the Industrial Maritime Strategy Comprehensive Plan Amendments final draft letter. There, on our agenda, it has, it has a note that any public comment must be received in writing eight hours before the meeting or presented in person here in City Hall. I did not receive any public comment by email on this agenda topic, and we do not have any public commenters in person. So so we can move on to taking action on the, on the final draft letter. And David has some introductory comments for that.
Well, let's see, there's, some of this is related to the public comment, which is not, not happening.
Right.
So really, that leaves, commission staff will introduce our final draft letter regarding proposed comprehensive plan amendments related to the industrial maritime.
Is that it? Is that all? No, there's more. Off of the next page, as a reminder.
Aha, as a reminder. The proposed comprehensive plan amendments are the first step in adopting and implementing the industrial maritime strategy recommendations. These amendments and regulatory changes will be considered this spring by the City Council's Land Use Committee. Following John's presentation, I'll ask for a motion to approve the final draft of the letter. I will then ask if there are any final comments before taking a vote on the letter. If you proposed any, if you have any proposed changes to the final draft letter, please prepare to suggest specific language for the proposed edit. It's important that we take action on this letter today in order to send it to the City Council's Land Use Committee in advance of their discussion.
Okay, thanks. I just have a few really short slides. So Olivia, next slide, please. So I, the final draft letter went out with the agenda last week, so you've had it for a week now. I resent it, I meant to resend it earlier this week, but I did resend it today. So it will be at the top of your inbox with, with a reminder of that, this is now, today is the fourth meeting. We've talked about this letter, we've, the timeline goes all the way back almost two months. We had a discussion at the February 23rd meeting. To start off the process, we had a staff draft letter at the March 9th meeting that was revised into a revised draft letter that was discussed at the March 23rd meeting. And I have not received any additional comments since that revised draft letter. So I'm hoping that is a good sign that we can move promptly to take action on the final draft letter today. It is important that we do it now, because we need to send our recommendations off to the City Council Land Use Committee, as they start their discussions, which they have scheduled several meetings, including a public hearing on the comprehensive plan amendments to implement the industrial maritime strategy. Next slide, please. So I'm just gonna just remind you of the general outline of the letter, just to give, just to remind you of what went into the letter. The, the letter covered not only the proposed changes to the comprehensive plan goals and policies, but we did draw into the letter several themes, recurring themes and comments from the planning commission that have been on this topic over actually the past several years. Starting with an overarching equity and environmental justice lens. The next section is where we go into the specifics of the land use element and the, any proposed revisions or new goals and policies that would implement the industrial maritime strategy. We have a section of the letter on protecting industrial lands, which generally states the planning mission is supportive of closing loopholes and protecting industrial, existing industrial zones. And we have a section on the new proposed industrial zones, the industry and innovation zone, and then the urban industrial zone, and the various features and benefits of each of those. And then there's a section on restricting non-industrial uses, and that is something, a recurring comment from the planning commission over many years about, that will basically eliminate the ability for comprehensive plan amendments to chip away at industrial lands. There is a section on housing and any of the policies that relate to housing in and adjacent to industrial lands. There is a short section on master planning for the Waska site and the Armory sites. And next slide, please. And then shorter sections of the letter relate to transportation and suggested policies for the transportation element. Same for climate change and resiliency, shoreline areas, and cultural resources. We spent a lot of time discussing this letter, so I feel like, and acknowledging that it's been fairly quiet from commissioners recently, I'm hoping that we can just move to take action on it today and send it along. I do want to thank everybody for their input, and I do feel like this is kind of a culmination of work that's been going on for several years, leading to, leading through not only the preparation of the strategy itself, but then now leading into adoption of comprehensive plan policies, and I encourage you all to follow the City Council Land Use Committee as they do their work. Next slide. You can follow along. The tentative schedule for the Land Use Committee is they are hoping to have their first briefing and discussion on May 10. A public hearing on May 24th, and I know we've talked about potentially having one or more commissioners provide testimony on behalf of the planning commission at that public hearing. June 8th would be their third meeting on any amendments, discussion, and a possible vote. And if necessary, they would extend the, to June 28th. So you see that the City Council Land Use Committee is, is scheduled a lot of time to discuss this. And then the mayor just released the proposal this week, so so it's now entering the next phase of the process. So I feel really good about the work that the commission has done, and I hope you should all too. I do have time, we do have some time for any additional comments and discussion. Otherwise, we can just move to take action.
So I think the order of operations is, we would get a motion to approve the letter, and then if we want to have any final edits, we would do that. But there's, I guess, preparatory conversation we want to have about it, self-congratulatory comments and things. I guess that, I guess this would be the, this would be the time. I do want, I do want to thank all the commission members, and John in particular, for helping with this, draft this letter. I think it's a very good letter, and I know everybody's had their, had their looks at it various times on it. And it's interesting, as this kind of becomes more public, you know, it's hitting people, some people for the first time. So they're, they're trying to process this, and so it's going to be interesting to hear the public conversation about it. We've had the benefit of a lot of presentations and a lot of conversations over, over a lot of time. So I think, I think most of us feel pretty comfortable about where we've landed, which is great. So unless there are other comments before we get a motion to put the letter up for approval, we'll go ahead and do that, entertain a motion to approve the letter. If someone cares.
Rick moves.
Approve this letter, or something, whatever.
Yeah, Rick moves and Lauren seconds.
Yeah.
How about that? Okay, great. Is there, are there any other, any final edits before we take, put it to a vote? Don't see any, so in that case, we will vote. All in favor of approving the, the letter on the industrial maritime strategy comprehensive plan amendments?
Aye.
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 Thanks, John.
Julio, thumbs up. Any, anyone opposed? And abstentions?
For the record, we did get one aye in the chat box, I think from Deanna, who can't verbally participate.
Great. Looks like we have unanimity. Thank you all.
Great, good job. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have a briefing on the mayor's proposed housing levy. And our own Olivia Baker will provide that briefing. Following that presentation, I'll facilitate our discussion, asking you if you have clarifying questions. We'll do our round robin, and you're, feel free to pass if you don't have any clarifying questions. And then following those questions, we'll open the floor to comments. Put your name and general topic or the issue of your comment in the chat, so we can keep that queue going. John will assist in monitoring the queue and ensuring that everybody has an opportunity to participate. And is it still true, we have until 5:25, or we probably need to go that long?
I think we'll need that. Olivia has a short presentation.
Okay. Yeah, we had 40 minutes for this agenda item, but we'll take as long as we need, I guess. Olivia?
Yes. Thanks, David. Yeah, my presentation's probably only about 15 minutes, maybe a little less if I'm smooth through it. So it'll be based on your questions, how long we go. But we'll move right from, now that we've got the industrial maritime letter approved, we're going to move right into our next comment letter that the group will be working on. So as many of you probably know, there's a new housing levy renewal that's up in the air now. There's a proposal on the table, and the commission will be writing a comment letter over the next few meetings to respond to the mayor's proposal. So I'm going to give a little bit of background first, before we get into the details on the new levy. I just want to provide a little background info on the levy itself, and then the current conditions that the Office of Housing used to inform that proposal, to get everyone on the same page. Because I know we have a lot of different like, levels of familiarity with the levy. And so most of this information that I'm going to share, that's background info, comes directly from the presentation that the Office of Housing gave to this group, the commission, in December, as well as what they shared recently with City Council when they introduced the proposal. So just to kick us off here, high-level information, the voter is an approved, voter-approved, sorry, the levy is a voter-approved property tax, and it's for a seven-year time period. The current housing levy was approved in 2016 and expires this year, so the city is looking to get a new levy approved by the voters to start next year in 2024. And typically, housing levy dollars work with other local funds to address needs, really across the entire affordable housing ecosystem. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. And the levies have been around for a while. The Seattle voters have approved a series of levies since 1986. And together, they've produced or preserved over 15,000 affordable rental homes and created or preserved 1,000 affordable homeownership. together they've produced or preserved over 15,000 affordable rental homes and created or preserved 1,000 affordable homeownership opportunities. And every passed housing levy has met or exceeded its goals, so they've done really good work. Thinking about the housing levy itself, it has these five main components to it that are really the sort of the key programs that the housing levy supports. So the first is the rental production and preservation program. That's typically the largest portion of the levy, and those funds are going toward production of rental housing for low income households, reinvestment in existing affordable housing, and investments in, you know, critical repairs, as well as the acquisition of new buildings to be used for long-term affordable housing. The other key piece is the operating and maintenance program. And that does, as you might expect, it funds operations of existing buildings to keep them staffed and keep them full of residents, and also the maintenance costs for capital improvements on those buildings. There's the homelessness prevention and housing stability services program, and that provides rent assistance and stability services for individuals and families, particularly those out or below 50% AMI, to help prevent eviction before it happens and to address, you know, rapid relocation for folks that experience homelessness. And then there's the homeownership program, which in the past is typically covered emergency home repair grants for folks who qualify, as well as foreclosure prevention assistance to help keep folks in their home, and down payment assistance for first time home buyers that qualify. And then the final category here is administration. And the housing levy is actually one of the main funding sources for the office of housing's budget in general that funds, you know, the staff work internally at the city of the office of housing, so that money goes towards running these programs, you know, administering the loans that need to happen, administering the grants. And so that's, it's a small portion of the levy, but it is still a significant portion. And so I wanted to talk a bit about the information that the housing, office of housing used when they were pulling together their proposal. Again, this is information that the office of housing shared with the commission in December, and so these are what they considered their their starting points. This is what they're building their proposal off of. So first, they wanted to note that Seattle is producing more affordable housing than ever, and the need for affordable housing is greater than ever. And as this group knows, it's increasingly expensive to purchase land and build new housing. And the city needs to invest in that existing affordable housing, as well as the workforce to maintain what's been built, and so that the city doesn't lose ground. And then they also really want to continue to center equity in their programs and investments. And then there's the housing market factors, right, that are impacting their proposal. So they noted in their recent presentation to council that housing growth is not keeping up with need, the current need for homes, affordable homes to those that incomes out or below 50% AMI, estimated to be around $30,000, or 30,000. And they noted, you know, part of that's created by the boom in population, the, the large increase in jobs that are created. They noted that from 2011 to 2019, for every 2.6 jobs that were created, only one unit of housing is built. And so this is, this is all stuff we've talked about before, right? But I think it's important to think about, or to hear what the office of housing is using as their framework as they they make this proposal, and that was also informed the mayor's proposal. This group also has discussed often that the cost of housing in Seattle has increased dramatically, both for renters and also for ownership units. And we know that the impacts of these increased costs have disproportionately impacted households of color, right? The, the cost burden is not felt evenly across all communities, and households of color have definitely experienced a greater and disproportionate burden of these increased costs. And we also know that the costs of development have increased dramatically. This is a slide that office of housing shared with this group in December. And so that means that the money that's invested in affordable housing by the city doesn't go as far as it did before, and that's important to think about too. When we look at the size of the housing levy and how it's increased from the, the past levy, and compare that to the number of units that it's able to produce even at its increased size. And we also know that housing affordable to the lowest income households, especially those making between 0 and 50% area median income, or, you know, below that, are the most challenging types of units to fund because they require such a heavy subsidy. So the, this is a handy little chart made by the office of housing. And it shows that public investments like the housing levy and jumpstart tax are typically the only sources of funding for housing at these lowest levels of affordability. And while there's, you know, we have the other programs like MFT or the MHA performance units. Those are able to cover more of that middle 50 to 100% AMI, but really funding sources like the levy are some of the only ways that we're building those homes that are affordable to that lowest income group. And I see in the chat, Julio, you had a question? Do you want to go ahead?
No, I, I'll wait till the time for questions. I just wanted to make sure that I could signal exactly which slide it was, and it's two slides back, so I'll wait.
Okay, sounds good. And so I just have one more for this section here. I just want to also point out that an area of concern that office of housing noted is the need for workforce stabilization, especially for affordable housing support staff, in particular, those who are working in permanent supportive housing, which is the, you know, the housing that supports those who've previously experienced homelessness and those who need additional services to stay housed. And if you know, if you're looking at this chart here, current wages paired with just the incredibly challenging nature of this work has led to staffing shortages and a lot of staff turnover. So you're looking at the chart, many permanent supportive housing staff can't even afford a one bedroom apartment in Seattle on their income. Right? And so that's been a huge bird, bird hurdle for the office of housing, when they're pulling together this proposal, to think about how they can stabilize that workforce and have some greater longevity in staff and better support them in the work that they do. So all of these factors from those last few slides were used together to develop the current housing levy proposal that's been put forward by the mayor's office. So I'll jump into talking about that now. Hopefully, all of you had the chance to look at the announcement that we sent out. I believe it went out with a memo last week, so it was the mayor's proposal that came out on March 30th. And at this point, that announcement is really all the details we have about the mayor's levy, and we're hoping to get some more information out of the April, the, there's a select committee at city council that's reviewing this, and on the April 19th, they have a meeting where they will hear more about the proposal, so I'm hopeful there will be more details at that time. But this is just sort of a high level look at what was in the mayor's proposal. So the total levy is for $970 million. That's about 130 million more than the last draft proposal that this group saw from the office of housing in the fall. And so the cost to homeowners from that proposal, you know, looking at the average assessed value for the median home value would be around $383 per year. And the levy focuses a lot on production, so it aims to create over 3,000 new units of rental and ownership housing. It has a pretty sizable homeownership component, and it includes a focus on the creation of new permanently affordable home options in addition to those previous programs that it had of down payment assistance and home repair grant programs. And then it also has a pretty big increase in the operation, maintenance and services program. And a large chunk of that increase is going to funds for permanent supportive housing operations and a wage stabilization fund to try to address that issue that I was talking about on the previous slide. And so this next slide, I know it's a busy slide, and hopefully you can see at least some of the details. But I think it's helpful to look at the levy in comparison, the proposal in comparison to the draft proposal that we saw from the office of housing last fall, as well as the existing 2016 housing levy. You can compare and contrast a little bit across these columns to see the differences. Obviously, in that top row there, you could see the total value of the levy has increased dramatically. And you can see that a big portion of that increase has gone to the production and preservation of rental housing, as well as to the operation, maintenance and services component and the affordable homeownership component. But what you'll notice if you look here is, one, the column for the mayor's levy is lacking some details. We just don't have those yet, unfortunately. I reached out to the office of housing to try to get a little more information, but haven't heard back yet, so I'm hopeful, as I mentioned, that we'll get those details in the next couple of weeks. But you'll also notice that despite that, you know, the sheer size of this levy and that increase in production and preservation of rental housing, the expected number of units that the levy will produce is it's noted in the mayor's proposal as 3,000 units, but that's talking about both rental and homeownership, which in the other columns is split between different rows, and that hasn't been broken down in the mayor's proposal yet, so not a significant increase in the number of units that'll be produced. And, you know, a lot of that comes from those increased development costs. But that was a, a piece that we talked about when we discussed this at the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee meeting last week as well. So we can definitely come back to this slide if there's questions. I know it's a lot to look at, but that it might just be helpful to see those numbers compared. Looking at the timeline for this process, the mayor's office published this sort of high level proposal to council on March 30th. And the council will review and hold public hearings from now until the end of June. There's going to be two public hearings, one on April 19th and one on May 31st. And we're hopeful that the select committee will approve a final proposal by the end of June, and then a if it is approved, it will go to voters in November of 2023. That's my, sort of my blurb about the, the housing levy. Now I'm going to take us into really high level staff draft outline for the comment letter. And we have two slides for that, and then we'll, we'll jump into any questions you might have about what I've shared and any early reactions to the comment letter outline. So looking at the outline, we discussed, as I mentioned, this is based off of both the discussion that came out of full commission last fall, when the office of housing came to the, to the group, as well as the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee discussion last week. And it was discussed that it would be good to start the, the letter off with some kudos to Mayor Harrell and his office for leading with a really bold proposal. That would be a good, you know, portion of the introduction, and this next section will look at support for the levy. The commission has typically been very supportive of the housing levies in the past. And so, you know, I think it would be good to lead with those kudos and lead with the support for passing a strong housing levy from the commission. But that section might also probably talk about the scale of need that we see coming, you know, for affordable housing and, and how the levy compares to that scale of need. Right? So some of the, the positive pieces that make it such a great thing to support are that the levy is one of the most reliable funding sources for affordable housing in Seattle. So that will be a key piece of that section. But looking at the scale, the levy would only produce 14% of needed units for households making 0 to 50% AMI over its seven year time span. And we can go into those numbers a little bit more, but that comes from some math that Michaela very graciously provided for us, thinking about the King County Affordable Housing Committee's numbers that they're putting out for Seattle's sort of portion of need for that 0 to 50 AMI group, and breaking that down just to look at the seven year time span. If you compare the 3,000 units to that seven year time span and what Seattle's supposed to provide, it's really only about, it would only cover 14%, even at, with a levy of this size. So obviously, the scale of need is far beyond what the levy can solve on its own. And the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee also talked about a need to talk about broader costs of the lack of affordability, right? So there's a cost to all of us who live in a city that can't afford to house, you know, the full range of economic incomes and economic levels, and you know, when we experience those groups being shut out, it leads to labor shortages, and it leads to a loss of diverse, diversity within communities. And it was noted that we should talk about how extremely low income people have a, a right to live in Seattle, right? So that's one of the reasons why this levy is so crucial. It was also talked about at Housing and Neighborhoods Committee to touch on how there will be two King County levies coming out this year that go to voters ahead of the housing levy. So it may be really important to, to note how these levies work together and to try to sort of weave that picture for folks so that we can try to stem some voter fatigue that will probably come out of that, that process. And then last couple of sections, we'll probably have a section talking about how the housing levy continues to be a really solid investment for Seattle, so this section would give some kudos to the office of housing as really strong stewards of the past levy funds. And it was noted that maybe we should talk about how, you know, the buildings that the office of housing is creating through these programs, and the communities that they house really add to the fabric of the city, right? So the levy is providing positive benefits to everyone in Seattle, not just those who live in the buildings themselves. And finally, it would end with commission recommendations, which is one of the main points I'd love any additional input on. As of right now, the, sort of the key points that the letter would be making as far as a recommendation would be that there's a need to really rightsize the levy, that this, this proposal could maybe be considered the minimum, but it's definitely not the ceiling for what the levy could do, and to consider adjusting the levy to produce more units than that 3,000 units that was proposed. And also to note that to really meet that level of need, the city needs to continue to seek additional sources of funding, right? The levy's not going to be able to to meet that need on its own. So last slide here, sorry, I hope this is dragging on a little bit, but I just wanted to take us through the timeline that we'd be looking at for this. So today is really just to, to brief you on the mayor's proposal to try to get folks on the same page and have a brief discussion about it. We would be reviewing a full staff draft comment letter at the April 27th meeting. We had the hopes of looking at the edits May 11th and then approving a final comment letter by May 25th. And there's an opportunity to give public comment from the commission at the May 31st council public hearing. So after all of that, are there questions on what I presented, initial thoughts on that tentative outline? Feel free to.
We do have Julio's question. Um, I don't know what number slide that was. It's probably six or seven back by now.
Um, it's a slide that had the impact by different communities like.
You went on mute, Julio. Come back.
Okay, okay. All right, yeah, that's a slide. Can you help me understand what I'm seeing in this slide?
Yes, sorry, I went through that pretty quickly. So the graph is showing people who are experiencing cost burden in their housing, right? So that's typically if people are cost burdened, they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing, and it's also showing severely cost burdened folks, which are spending more than 50% of their income on housing. So those who are cost burdened are represented in the dark blue, and the severely cost burdened are represented in green. And so it's showing you the portion of each of those populations who are experiencing that level of cost burden. And so, yeah, does that make sense?
Perfect. Rocky, have a comment?
Yeah, of course, I, I, I will support the levy no matter what. I always felt, yes, I would have ever changed that. What's this? There was a slide on the cost of development.
This one?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And so a a lot of this, in my opinion, is self-inflicted, self-inflicted, excuse me, by the city. And so I and McKenna and I talked about this before on different issues, but we need to, in my opinion, incorporate something about reducing the cost for development. Um, whether it's design review or energy code, all these things are very important. Programs are good, they're important, but the costs are outrageous. Um, and you can get more units if they cost less. That's that's kind of the point.
See, Kayla?
And Vanessa asked me to say a few words at the end of Olivia's presentation, but frankly speaking, I think Olivia's framing really accurately captured what it was that we talked about at the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee meeting. So I don't really think I have anything additional to say that wouldn't be redundant to sort of laid out in the framing. I think that's really reflective of our discussion. Um, I think, you know, we really did batter on that, like, is this the right number? Should it be? It should be a different number. Um, and I think, you know, where we all were able to agree was that the need far outstrips what the levy can meet. And that's the reality, and I think that's a message that is important to get out there. Um, but also, this is um, this is the city uh showing leadership and what it can look like is not to design a levy with equity in mind. This workforce piece, this pay equity piece is new. And it's a real issue. We cannot sustain the operations of our buildings over time if we have consistent and chronic turnover by staff who experience consistent and chronic trauma with the populations um and with people who are experiencing trauma as well. So um, I'm just, I'm appreciative of all the work that the advisory committee put into developing the proposal that the mayor then put forward. Um, and I appreciate the mayor showing leadership here. So I think we'll we'll be threading a needle with our comment letter. Um, and then Rocky, to your specific point here about the costs, um self-inflicted in some ways, yes. Um, I I would say that there were some other factors in like twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two related to the cost of construction materials and the concrete workers' strike that also led to increasing costs that we saw in both market rate and um uh and affordable, but the strike's over, um, maybe construction costs are beginning to stabilize.
Oh. So I didn't realize that the six twenty-nine was really for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah. But you do see, you do see, like, there's.
Oh, no.
So, um, yeah, uh, you know, but.
I think you're right.
Yeah, and I think the Affordable Housing Advisory Board at the state level has done some good research into sort of trying to evaluate um the increase in costs in affordable construction in particular. Um, and so, uh, yeah, that's just my my two cents on the cost. I think that jump in particular is a is an oddity that we saw from some some factors that were at play related to broader market and and strikes that that were happening at the time.
Uh, Matt had a comment?
Uh, yeah, I was just hoping to get, um, uh, I don't know if it's if in the comment letter, we can ask for more clarification, because, you know, if we look at this graph, for example, the cost of construction, you know, it has jumped considerably, but it's not the two and a half times that the levy, you know, if you if you calculate the same number of of housing units and the old levy at two hundred million versus seven hundred and seven million for the same number of units today. That's two and a half times, whereas this is a fifty percent increase. Um, and so that's, so there's, so there's more at play there that I'm not, uh, that I would love to see broken out. And I would also say for the same number of units, the program administration uh more than doubling. Uh, also, um, I question where that where that comes from. Um, because we're not, you know, doubling the number of units, you know, and it's there's, 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 you know, something that a a few things that don't add up for me that I would want to um highlight, because I would I would much rather see, you know, that extra thirty million dollars in program administration go buy more units. Uh, if that were possible. Um, I think there's just so much focus on the total number as opposed to the price per unit.
Yeah.
And I want to, I would, I I want to make sure that they're they're dialing that in as tight as possible.
Yeah, three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars per unit is nine hundred and seventy million divided by three thousand. I don't know if that's good or bad, but it seems like.
Well, you'd have to track some track things like.
Yeah, that's.
Operation maintenance and services.
Totally, yeah, yeah, seven oh seven. It's it's two hundred and thirty-five per K per unit, which, you know. That that does sound too far off. Nevertheless, I feel like, you know, as part of this, part of this discussion, this campaign for the public. Uh, it's really easy to look at these numbers in this comparison and and be like, why is, why is there such jump? We all understand the volatility in the market. It's it's feels bigger than it might be.
Julio has a question, and then I have a question. Lauren.
So, oh, sorry. Too much. Okay. Go for it.
All right. So my basic question is, where does the levy fall short? But I I know where it does fall short. There isn't enough money. I kind of like want to get to a more granular point of the question. So like, for example, should the levy emphasize um apartment construction, large apartment construction for larger families? Should the levy separate money for uh purchasing of homes? Is there a specific area or areas in which the levy falls short?
The question's kind of related to that.
You want to tag on, sure?
Yeah. This is a, this is a transportation planner asking about housing, so open to education here. Um, Olivia, could you go back to the um to the slide that shows where the how what um income levels the housing levy is well-positioned to fund housing for? Because, you know, I'm just kind of linking this to our other work um on the commission. And Julio, I think this kind of is maybe what you're getting at. It's like, what are the most effective strategies? What should we be funding? And I see this, you know, public investment, of course, is best positioned to um support folks with extremely low incomes that that need to get into housing. And so I understand that. But kind of ripping off of what Amy said, like, we we need not look at equity from the lens of today, but rather um, what is the future that we want to see? And I want to see more people have the ability to build wealth wealth through their homes. And this kind of gets at middle-income housing. And so I don't know what the home ownership supports that either the housing levy can support or if there is a other um initiatives or other kind of funding sources that can fund those pathways to homeownership, even if supportive. And then we can also work the land use side of saying there needs to be more opportunities to build middle-income housing. But that was kind of my question. I don't know. That's not, I don't want to overshadow your question, Julio. But, you know, where is it falling short? Where is it best positioned to to fund um based on need? Open to. Olivia, can you go to the slide where they show how much is going to homeownership versus uh the other um section, which I think we can assume is multifamily rental? So there's a portion of funds set aside for affordable homeownership. In this context, I think that would be affordable homeownership at the fifty to eighty percent of area median income level, not above that. Because that's kind of begins to be where you can get a bank loan or you can get, you know, maybe, maybe you have to down payment for that, possibly. Uh, but yeah, the the levy, that's kind of what I'm, what I, I don't know how many units that produces. I don't think it's a lot. Fifty-one million doesn't buy that many homes. Um, but if you're layering that MSN, maybe down assistance a pay payment, down system, down payment assistance programs and other things as well, maybe it's stretched a little bit. Oh, they have it there in the old one. Three hundred and sixty-seven homes. Not a lot.
And then, uh, Julio, did you get your question answered? Because you you were also asking about like the sizes of the units and that kind of thing too, right?
Uh, I wasn't really specifically asking about size of the unit. I was going to understand. Uh, um, look at the pieces of the levy, what areas does it fall short? Areas in which we could maybe do some more work in the future. And I think my my question was answered.
Great. Um, so my, I'm just pondering the overall context of of affordable housing efforts in the city and recognizing that MHA is probably going to have to be adjusted because it looks like, you know, production is falling and the the strong market that we could rely on before to generate all the it's, didn't we, didn't we raise more money from MHA and, you know, in a relatively short period of time than we did over a similar period of time with housing levy?
Yeah.
So, so that's hugely important. And if that's falling, we have to adjust our, we have to adjust our rates, which I think is probably going to have to happen. Um, what does that mean in terms of what we can produce overall versus what we've been able to do?
Yeah.
Um, so I don't, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know the answer to that question, but I just.
I think for our letter, it's a comment, it's a statement about the need for diversity and funding sources. So one of the last things that she said at the end of the letter is that we would talk about the need for other funding sources. And the city needs a port, a diversity of fund sources that perform in different types of markets. So that when the economy is booming, certain types of programs are generating units. When the economy is down, we're also still able to step in when things are more affordable and maximize the number of units we can create. And so from my perspective, the housing levy is a yes and. Yes, we need it. Yes, we need a lot, and we need other tools in our toolbox as well. And we need the county, the state, the feds, all playing a role in helping us meet that need because we can't do it alone. So I know that's that's like a trite answer, but um, yeah, we can't give up on the levy because we have something like MHA because when real estate development slows down.
It makes it all the more important, right? They have something more or less guaranteed.
Right, right.
Anybody else have a other questions or observations?
I had a question. I'm, I think I'm kind of reading between the lines on what Olivia presented. I mean, it's it's a good thing with the mayor and others have done, not even close to filling the void, not even close. And I know there was like a fourteen percent number somewhere in this, but like, I assume that that's based on the problem we have right now. That's not projecting forward that our our housing problem is going to get worse, or maybe it is. I'm not sure.
It is, it is.
Okay, good. But so I guess my my question is, is, um, and I think I know the answer, but I mean, how do they decide on the number? I mean, it, you know, obviously, if you double it and people hold it down, you get nothing, and that's horrible. I assume it's some calculation with polling and politics and other annoying things.
Yes, I don't think that we were briefed on how we.
On the political calculus.
On the political calculus, but um there are, there are two other levies happening this year on the ballot. We just voted a, you know, social housing thing, which really isn't a a voting request, but it might confuse some voters. And then Seattle has other levies, Move, Move Seattle's coming up, the Parks Levy. There are other levies happening, so if I had to guess, I would assume this was informed by polling.
Yeah.
Um, and kind of a calculated decision on what the voter tolerance is for the size of the levy. But it's a, it's a guess. It's the public dialogue that will ensue about the size of it. Um, and the first round of edits, you know, they they actually increased it from the November proposal because they got feedback from people saying it's not big enough. Um, but yeah, that when the when OH briefed us, they didn't tell us the math of how they came up with that number in particular.
Uh, so if there's nothing more, then the only thing that would be left would be public comment, but I don't believe we have anybody.
I did not receive any public comment. Um, and there are no public commentators here in person.
All right then. Entertain a motion to adjourn to a nearby spot. Did you already identify one?
It's it's adjourned first. I moved to adjourn. That's.
All this is taken care of first. All right, you are adjourned.
Thanks. Good job.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.